Okay, if I could get a motion that we only discuss those five items we went into closed session for. Three items under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 on Personnel Matters. Building Code Technical Review Board reappointments, three appointments. One item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3, real property acquisition or disposition. 3012 Lee Highway and Filter Plant Tour.
Summit.
Thank you.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Quants.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
All right, if you would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, that will be led by Councilman Clark, and invocation will be Councilman East.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd like to join us in prayer, please bow your head at this time. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your guidance in all matters, and we ask for your continued grace and mercy. Please be with each of us this evening and always. In your name we pray, amen.
All right. First, I'd like to welcome the visitors and guests that are here and online. It's very nice to see the chambers full. Thank you for coming out. All right, modification to public session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we add one item. It'll be new item 10, Resolution 2024-21, Resolution Reappointing Candidates to the Town of Pulaski Building Code Technical Review Board.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Quants.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is our presentation. It's a 15-minute presentation, and that'll be by the City of Refuge Charity Tournament Contribution. Joe Blankenship.
Well, I was hoping I wouldn't go first, because I'm a rookie at this. I did bring this. I wanted to leave this with you guys. And I've got some notes as well. I'm going to skip my notes and just speak a little bit from my heart, if that's okay. I am Joe Blankenship. You'll have to excuse my voice. I've had some surgeries as well, so. Two years ago, I couldn't even speak, so it's been a blessing. But I'm just going to speak from my heart. I am the Director of City of Refuge. We are a nonprofit organization, and, like I said, I'm going to leave this with you. My wife and I run it. We've been running it. We started out running a youth center in 2007. We turned it into a City of Refuge, which is affiliate of Atlanta, Georgia. We've been running this for five years. And before I forget, I would like to invite the administration team, the council, the mayor. I'd like for you guys maybe to come and tour our building if you ever get a chance. It's on Door Highway. We're very proud of what we've done. We've done a lot of remodel to it. We've also, we're working on some other issues that we, so we can get in at full-time and serve our community like we need to. Last year, we reached out to over 16,000 individuals. And I mean, that's some kind of a service that we provided for our town citizens. We do that through what we call, we've got a mama bear closet, which is essentials. It's health items for single moms who we target. We also work with the DSS, foster care, veterans, any of those that can come in. They can get personal hygiene and get cleaning supplies. We do provide diapers. We provide wipes as well for single moms. We also, we have a look-up boutique. We do work with several restaurants. They'll call and they say, hey, we've got somebody that needs to go to work. Do you have any black pants? So we try to put some back. Most of the clothes that we have are for women. We do have some put up for the men. The women are who we normally service, because most of the time, if it's a man, it's probably a homeless person or somebody like that, and we help out there as well. But we do provide those services with the cleaning supplies, so those kind of go together. We just opened up a, we call it a RISE Salon, so we provide haircuts. So this year alone, we've given out over 100 haircuts. So we've got a place up there stationed where they can wash hair within cut hair. And that just helps, once again, we target maybe a little more than we should, but the single moms who struggle. And, you know, a lot of people struggle these days anyway, so. But with single moms, we try to target them a little bit more. So that's part of what we do. We just now finished supplying our, we have a training center. You know, you can put a Band-Aid on a lot of things, but if you actually get down in it and you help people. So we've got a vocational training center that we just opened up. We've talked to several nurses in the area. There's several classes they want to do. We've talked to people that do the insurance for the older ones. We're setting up some classes like that, so we want to train. We also, and we're not in our building at this time, but we do have an after-school program. We call it a core enrichment after-school program. We have 12 students. We teach them, I haven't started, we teach them stuff that they can use at home, like we do a cooking class for them. We've taught them sign language. We've taught them Spanish. We do a program every year with their parents and grandparents. So it's a really, really good program. Dang, I'm running out of time. It's a really good program, and I'm saying all this to say this. This is not what I wanted, but I want you to get a picture of what we do, okay? We service a lot of people in our community. If you ever have a day on a Monday or Friday right by Door Highway, you'll see the line from our building back and goes all the way down to the other end of the other street. So we're servicing a lot of people. We're doing a lot of good. And that's what we, that's what our sign says, "City of Refuge, where good works." And that's what we're trying to do. Also, our vision statement is bringing light, hope, and transformation to our city. Now, I'm saying all that, we're having a fishing tournament. We're a nonprofit. I don't, you know, I know you guys understand nonprofit. The only way nonprofit works is through donations or sponsorship. And so that's why we're here tonight. We're asking for the council and you guys to take a look at what we're doing. We're asking for $500 to sponsor our fishing tournament. You'll be a sponsor. We'll have your banner. It's, we have several other sponsorship. It's a really, really good fundraiser for us. It's one of our second, probably the second-best one we do all year. Last year, I think we raised over $6,000, so, you know, it's a good day to, just for one day. Of course, we did a lot of legwork before then, but we're coming to you guys tonight to see if you want to partner with us. And when I say partner, sponsor, what we do. You know, there's an old African proverb that says this, if you want to go somewhere fast, go alone. If you want to go somewhere far, go together. So we're asking you guys to partner with us. We like to call, we like to call, we've got churches and other organizations, but we call them community partners, and that's what we like to have. We like to have community partners. So I'm just, that's what our talk was, our 15 minutes. We just, we wanted to come to you and see about tagging along with us, maybe sponsoring us, and being one of our community partners. Appreciate your time.
Do you mind if I just ask a quick question?
Oh, absolutely, please.
The fishing tournament, when is it? Since you're on Facebook, you know, live right now, so speak into the mic and make sure people know where it's going to be and when.
It's May, well, May 3rd, we'll have, we'll have the registration. Well, you can register online at W, if I'm on Facebook, I gotta go ahead and do it.
Do it.
It's in there, right? You can go to our webpage, and you can register, CityOfRefugePC, as in PulaskiCounty.org. You go there, you can register. It's $45 a slot. We've got lots of prizes and stuff that come out. The tournament is, well, May 3rd, we'll have registration. It's that night at Gatewood. And so we'll have live music. We'll have a free hot dog dinner for anybody who wants to come out and enjoy the music. I don't know if you guys, I'm sure you have, but if anybody, if you haven't been to Gatewood lately, you're missing something, because it's one of Pulaski's best kept secrets. Beautiful place. So this is the seventh year we've done it there, and so it'll be on the 4th of May. And we'll start in the morning, about 7:00, 7:30, they'll get together, and we'll start there. And like I said, it is a, I was hoping to ask something about the mission down there, but anyway. But yeah, it'll start on May the 4th, starts around 7:30 and go to about 1:32 afterwards. There'll be another dinner we like to eat. So there'll be another meal afterwards, and then we'll give the presentations to the winners, so, yeah. Great day of fishing.
Any other questions?
I've got some comment. We're going to church out here as new host, and Pastor Randy Lawrence. Y'all had a big program out here a couple months ago, where he had, you've given haircuts, finger polish, stuff like that. I want to say that, for the first time, my three grandchildren actually worked that day. They was tired when they come home, and it was amazing that you could get them to work like that, so. It was very, it was a lot of people that day. I didn't intend I had to work with my daughter. Everybody did. It was a huge day.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. And we do that three or four times a year. Listen, I was born and raised here. I love this community, and my wife and I, we're sold out for it. And, you know, we're going to do whatever we can to get it. This is probably my least favorite thing, is asking for money, but unfortunately, this is what you have to do when you run a nonprofit, and so, you know, that's what you do. But, yeah, it was a great day that day, and we just did one recently, and once again, over 100 haircuts, so. It's a good thing. I highly recommend it.
Your wife invites me to the gala every year, because we tried to make it, but one day I will. But what I like about your organization is that you do hand up, not a handout. And that's the difference, and I really think that you all are doing good stuff down there.
Well, even with that, you know, even when we give service, if somebody comes in and goes through our clothing or gets a haircut, we ask them to give at least three to four hours of community service for that. Now, do they always know, but that's what we like to require of that, so, yeah. Once again, please, let's have a time when you guys can come in and see our building and stuff. It's really come a long way, so I'd like for you guys to see that. Is my time up?
It stops when we start questions, so you're good, as long as there's still questions.
Yeah, good. Yeah, please ask, I mean.
Comments or questions? Thank you, Joe. Thank you. We will, we'll talk about it and see what we can do.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Yep, let me leave that.
All right, next on our agenda is the public hearing section. So that will be Summer Bork. The first one is Ordinance 2024-06, rezoning 1733 Dora Highway from Drop Site DS to General Business District B2. And that will be your planning commission case number 2024-RZ001.
So both of these are actually rezoning drop sites. We had, in the 2003 zoning ordinance, there is a drop site zone. The town owns both of these properties, and they, and you can see them, they're highlighted in Crayola Cran Green. And they are, they were never rezoned when that zone was turned into a use. And so we have now these two floating parcels that have no active zoning. And so with insight from the planning commission and looking at the area and the possible uses, should the town ever decide to no longer own those parcels, the one down towards the bottom of the screen on the right is recommended to be a B2 rezoning, and the one up over on the left is recommended for I2 because of surrounding zoning. And we are not doing, we did not reach out to any other property owners in terms of making it a larger rezoning, so it would just have to follow in line with the zoning that's surrounding it. For the Dora Highway parcel, which is the case in question, we looked at the three possible zones, R2, B2, and I2. Given the proximity to the two residential lots and also Pete Creek, and the little piece of pink that you see kind of going off the screen is the town's bike park. The commission feels that it is a more reasonable option to rezone it B2. This will allow expansion of the town's water systems that are there currently, should we need that. But it will not make it, but it will not put something in the future, should the town choose to sell it, that would make it an industrial use that could cause nuisances to the residents there. It's mitigating those options a bit. We held a public hearing, and the commission, the planning commission has recommended unanimously that that be rezoned to B2.
Does council have any questions about the first one? Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing. And do we have anyone that wants to speak for that? Okay, and as we do not, we will close that public hearing. And then we'll move to the next one, if you want to go ahead with the second one. I know it's just a continuance, but.
So the second one is also owned by the town. It is currently where the convenience center is located in town, for those who are kind of not quite as up with your maps. It is currently surrounded by I2-zoned parcels, and because of not contacting any other property owners in the area to look at a larger-scale rezoning, we are just rezoning it to be contiguous with the rest of the surrounding area, which would make it an I2. And so with that, commission has voted with a majority vote to rezone it to I2. There was some conversation around protection of Pete Creek, which is, I believe, what prevented two of our commission members from agreeing to rezone the parcel to Industrial District.
Any questions on that one, then? With that, I'll open the public hearing. And there's no one to speak. I will close that. And, thank you, now we'll need to do a voting, so if, you know, we'd like to start with the Ordinance 2024-06.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 2024-06 as written.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Quants.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
And then Ordinance 2024-07.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Ordinance 2024-07 as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Quants.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Summer. They both passed. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is Resolution 2024-19, Observance of National Public Safety Telecommunications Appreciation Week, April 14th through 20th, '24. Todd, would you like to tell them a little about what that is? Okay. Chief, you knew that was coming, didn't you?
So what this is, is just the, a week that's dedicated to the communications officers, that law enforcement, really all first responders rely on callers calling in to give out their emergencies, anything like that. So what it is, is it's dedicated to them, say thank you for all their hard work that they do. They're kind of some of the forgotten heroes in our line of work, because they're the ones that's behind the scene. They're law enforcement's safety net. They're our lifeline.
Thank you. One of you'd like to make a motion? I'll read it and then bring them up, so if you want to.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
I can read it first and then.
Let's do this, and then you read it.
I'll read it, then you can do the.
There we go.
Okay. This is not our first time, but it seems like it. I am so sorry. Resolution 2024-19, Resolution in Observance of National Public Safety Telecommunications Appreciation Week, April 14th through April 20th, '24. Whereas, the week of April 14th through April 20th, 2024, has been designated as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And whereas, in observance of this week, the town council desires to recognize the local public safety dispatchers of the Pulaski County Joint 911 Communications Center, who answer calls for service and assistance every single hour of the day, every day of the year. And whereas, the dispatcher is the first person to respond to a call for help, shouldering the awesome responsibility to assist victims and guide first responders in those first vital moments after a crime, illness, or accident has left its mark on the helpless victim. And whereas, the men and women who serve as public safety dispatchers serve the vital function of keeping an emergency situation under control by collecting information to relay to first responders in the field, giving life-saving direction to the caller during a medical emergency, serving as a lifeline to officers, firemen, or medical personnel in the field, or simply being the calm voice in the dark night that reassures the victim of a crime or accident that help is on the way and that they are not alone. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the town council of the town of Pulaski, Virginia, setting in regular session the 16th day of April 2024, that the town council, as part of National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, does hereby recognize and commend the dispatchers of the Pulaski County 911 Joint Communication Center for their tireless service and dedication to the community and their fellow citizens. This resolution will be effective upon adoption and will hereby be adopted the 16th day of April 2024 by the duly-recorded vote of the town council of Pulaski, Virginia. And may I have the motion now?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 2024-19 as written.
Second. And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Quants.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
May I have someone from the telecommunications, please come up?
There's several folks here, I believe.
Yeah.
Come up here, Chris, get you spanking.
And I'd just like to say personally, as somebody who gets called a lot when things aren't going well, I appreciate that this is a really hard job to be the person to get called when something bad's happening.
Come on, Betty.
Come on, Betty. Betty, Betty. All right.
Thank y'all.
Chris, Chris, before you, I want to say one thing. Before, when I retired, basically, I just took my car down there and parked it, and I didn't get a chance to tell you and all the dispatchers, Betty, that I had a chance to work with for 30 years. Thank y'all for taking me home. Relay that, because I never got that chance, but appreciate it.
We appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is Resolution 2024-20. If I read it, it tells what it is, so we will do that. So, Resolution 2024-20, Resolution in Observance of National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week, April 13th through April, wait, April 14th through April 20th. Whereas, the National Animal Care and Control Association has dedicated April 14th through 20th as Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week. And whereas, the various federal, state, and local government officials throughout the country take the time to recognize and commend all animal control, or animal care and control professionals for their dedicated service to the citizens, public safety, domestic, and wildlife animals across the nation. And whereas, each animal control officer is committed to the mission to protect the health and safety of our citizens and to protect animals and promote their humane treatment. And whereas, the town of Pulaski would like to express its sincere appreciation for the outstanding service provided by Pulaski Animal Control Officers. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the town council of the town of Pulaski, Virginia, setting in regular session the 16th day of April 2024, that the town council, as part of National Animal Care and Control Association, does hereby recognize and commend the officers of Pulaski County Animal Control for their dedication to the community and their fellow citizens. This resolution will be effective upon adoption and will hereby be adopted the 16th day of April 2024 by the duly-recorded vote of the town council of Pulaski, Virginia. And may I have a roll, may I have a motion for that, please?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-20 as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that?
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Quants.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
And now, may I have Ms. Webb, could you come up? All right. All right, next on the agenda is Resolution 2024-21, Resolution Reappointing Candidates to the Town of Pulaski Building Code Technical Review Board. Can I make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 2024-21 of reappointing candidates to the Town of Pulaski Building Code Technical Review Board as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Quants.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Next is the public comment period. I have no comment speaker slips, so we will move to the consent agenda. If you've had time to look at the minutes from Tuesday, April 2nd, and would someone make a motion that we accept if there's no corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt town council minutes from Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024 as written.
Aye, second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, ma'am?
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Quants.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Now, we'll move to the council comments. Mr. East?
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Clark?
Just to reiterate, Telecommunicators Week, they do a good job, so.
Mr. Dawson?
I just had two things. One, just wanted to thank and show some appreciation for our town manager and our water plant officials and supervision. We got a chance as a council to go see an updated look of that facility and some of the obstacles that it faces and what future needs may potentially be. And there's a lot of work to find out what the answers to all that are, but I thought it was really good for all of us to get a chance to see it. but I thought it was really good for all of us to get a chance to see it. I know, you know, it's good to, you kind of hear numbers and concerns and to actually see what they're up against and how hard they're working to deliver the quality of water that we're getting. It's impressive. So, I really appreciate the time that was taken for that. I think it was well worth it. And I wanted to, I know we had City of Refuge here this evening making a request for donation, and just had two things. We, as a council, I guess, may have been as much as three years ago, I think, decided to put an organized way of going about the approval of donations together. It's kind of, it allowed organizations, I guess, to know, you know, what types of things that we needed in order to be able to see, you know, what and where donations were going, just to kind of have a consistent process. So, that way, you know, if a hundred different people, you know, organizations asked, you know, asked of the town for donations, that we had a consistent way that we looked at those things and ideally, you know, would be able, when someone contacted us with interest on a donation, that we could go ahead at that time and say, okay, thanks for reaching out to us. These are the things that we need. And this is the process to get, you know, on a council, you know, meeting for presentation, you know, to get, you know, approvals, or whatever that process may be. And we could always, it's been three years back, look at revamping what that process is. But I do think it was important at that time, and I would think still, to have a consistent way to help people know, you know, how to go about that process, you know, to, one, to make sure we don't miss, you know, an important opportunity, and two, to make sure that everybody's handled the same way. But, and I know we just recently, obviously, have changed, you know, town management, and, you know, it's been three years ago that we've kind of gone through that process. So, I think it would be, I don't want to see that kind of fall through the cracks. I feel like what City of Refuge is doing is certainly worth, you know, their request of $500. And I don't know if Mr. Day needs a motion in order for us to move forward with that process, probably to help. I would like to make that motion to approve Mr. Day to sponsor for the Town of Pulaski Fish and Charity Tournament at $500 level as requested.
Second.
Would you do a roll call, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
No.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Ratliff?
I'm glad Chief Police here. Now, I had a call actually from a citizen, and I told him I relayed on to you that they appreciate their senior officers out a whole lot. I told him, be careful of the ones you don't see. That's one you don't want to see. But I told him, I'm glad you're here, not to relay. I was going to tell town manager, but they was very pleased with it, so. I don't know where they live at, but they're seeing you a lot. Second thing, if the town manager, I actually got a call from a citizen who lives on Ward Lane, Ward and Ridge Lane, where Claremont School is. Apparently, they're turning it into some kind of a whatever. There's a little strip of road that goes in front of that, and then the school owns the outside. Apparently, the school still owns the roadway. He was suggesting that we ask the school to give us the road, since we take care of it anyway. Therefore, in the near future, if we need to enforce any type of park or anything like that, then it is town's property. I didn't know the school would own a roadway, but apparently, they own that little stretch. Well, you grew up up there. It's a little stretch of road. It's not very much, but it's between Ridge Road and Ward Road.
Okay.
And see if we can get possession of it.
We'll take it. Who should I be communicating with? Who is it?
What was that?
Oh, the Claremont School, I think it's...
Claremont School, I'm sorry.
I don't know if the Claremont School, it was owned by the county.
Yeah.
It might still be owned by the EDA. I don't know if, it's just like the old middle school. It's being repurposed, so.
I know the developer doing it, so I'll catch up with you.
Yeah. I mean, I just don't know if it's actually been transferred yet.
I didn't, I didn't, he, when he said it, I wasn't worried you don't do that, but I guess you could.
Yeah, you can't just deed it over. There's a process we have to go through procurement-wise.
Right.
We can absolutely address it and take care of it.
Okay. And if you're just concerned near future that we can try to enforce something, Chief, it'd be our issue.
We'll look into it. Absolutely will.
Only other thing I have is I told him I was going to bring my grass up. I want the grass on our sidewalks, Main Street especially, just cut the grass and weed it. I don't want to see, you know, a patch of grass in front of Pizza Hut or whatever. Just cut the grass. You're there on anyway. Right, just cut it. So, enough said about that. I appreciate it.
Welcome to the table.
Mr. Clontz?
Nothing this evening.
Mr. Reese?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
All right. I can't think of anything right off. I know that I'll, I'm sure I'll think of something later. I'll talk to you. Next, we have the manager's report. Mr. Day?
Okay, so I just kind of, like, this week, found out why the manager's report section was on the agenda. Every month, I really, you know, trying to learn the process and the format of agendas. So, I was always getting these funny looks from everybody. Why you say that? I didn't know why it was on there, but now I know. So, with that being said, Mr. Dawson, we will absolutely pull that out. Makes sense. It's typical practice. And we will go back and find that. There's also an atmosphere to do that, negotiate and communication in. And we'll absolutely streamline those from here on out. We'll take care of that.
Thank you.
So, just to give you a little bit of an update, we've been working with 67, I think is its name, on Main Street, that project. And before I get into that, I'll, I'd like everybody to welcome Scott Farthing back here at the back. He is transitioning between Scott and Spencer right now. It'll take some little time, but Spencer's going to be a quitter and moving on. So, Scott will be working with us from here on out in the future till the transition is completed. But the mums, granted, it's a little complicated right now trying to get everybody together on the same page. We've been trying to get them those funds now for quite some time. And then you throw local government into it. We're a little slow. And attorneys and contractors, and then you got DHCD hovering in the background. And so, it does take a little time. The brewery, we're also looking for some additional grant money right now for the brewery. Actually applying for some grants. It's my understanding that he's been communicating with the county too, and that project is still under construction, still going very well. I spoke to Scott several times, but earlier in the week, about Streetscape. And I know Streetscape has been an issue on Pulaski's table for quite some time. And looking forward to that being completed. Absolutely not why it's under construction, because it is going to, you know, it is going to cause some delay. And, you know, it's going to take some major cooperation from all the businesses. But we pretty much have got to go ahead on that project. They're just closing up some smaller details on it. And hopefully, in the next month and a half, we'll go to add for that project. Looking forward to a completion of that project. We had an opportunity today to talk to VDH. And as I mentioned, they will be here at our first meeting in May to recognize the accomplishments of the water plant and their operators they have up there for continuing to produce high-quality water with an understanding that the plant's not in the best shape. So, that's a lot to be said for the community. And, you know, to win that award from the Health Department is purely water quality award. It says a lot. So, we're real excited about that. Just also want to give you a heads up on the proposed budget. I've been working with Jackie and staff, Jackie Morris, and Finance, ever since the day I started. Timing wasn't the best for me to have a whole lot of input into the budget. I will be a thorn in their side next year, though. But, so hopefully, in the future, we'll be coming to you for public hearings and kind of give. I don't know what your past practices are, but I'm going to attempt my practices in the past and see how, see where they follow that. But I like to work with council on the budget to come to a completion. We'll present you something rather soon. Time's running out for that. And just a couple of community updates, and I've never attended any of these events. I'm looking forward to them. April 18th is Pulaski County DSS Family Fun Festival in Jackson Park from 3:30 to 6:00 p.m. Also, on April 23rd is Community Cleanup Day. With Pulaski Police Department, Pulaski County 911 Communications Center, they're meeting at Heritage Park on Door Highway at 1:00 p.m. We, you can come out to that. I guess you could just bring your own bags and stuff. I don't know how that works. I'm talking to you, Wey. And on May 1st, Battle of the Badge Blood Drive at the train station from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00. May 15th, Pulaski Area Transit Golf Tournament at Draper Golf. And I think I sent that out to, most of y'all is going to be, I know where Ratliff's going to be at anyway. May 18th, Music and Merchants in downtown Pulaski from 3:00 to 9:00. Last but not least, the consensus that I'm hearing for the property that we own is canceled. Main objective is housing. So, I recently ran an RFP, and we're going to, we're going to continue to add to that by running an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications. But I want to be sure that, in my understanding, is correct. I haven't been in a whole lot of those negotiations with y'all, but housing is targeted. Not limited to, but a big emphasis on housing.
I think the only thing I've heard outside of that is obviously the stretch of road on Memorial Drive, you know, that had at one time and could potentially be considered for, you know, commercial, you know, space at some level if, you know, there was, if something appropriate was pursued. But beyond that, residential is the only thing I've heard.
Yeah, I mean, I think housing, specifically like a mixture of housing, you know, making sure that there's, there's, because it's the last chance regardless, be able to develop something of scale in town without annexation. So, I think that anything that could make that be a real, you know, sort of combined residential, commercial, professional, and then housing at, you know, various densities and, you know. All I know is I've heard many times people saying, we need patio homes. You know, there's a lot of folks in town that are aging, and it would be, I think, a real, a real missed opportunity if there wasn't some of that.
And you'll have every opportunity to give that direction officially in the future. So, the way that process works is we'll have respondents to those RFPs, RFQs, and each of you will look at them, will shortlist them down, list them down to about three or four, and then you'll actually interview them, you'll score them. And then we can negotiate with whoever scores the highest. And the thing to remember, if their negotiating dollar figure is not attractive, you can go to the next one, but you can't ever go back. So, it's little catches in there that we'll bite you if you're not up to date with that. But at that time, you'll be able to tell them exactly what you're looking for in that property. The idea is to, for that engineer or architectural firm, is to do all the environmental work. They'll also look at the lay of the land, so they can put in roads, and they'll look at the hydraulics for water reasons and environmental. So, it's some cost that's contributed to that, and we'll talk about that more in the future. But I just want to be sure that y'all's past conversations, that I'm at least in line with those. So, what you'll end up with ultimately, 18 months to two years down the road, is a set of drawings for a subdivision that meets the criteria that each of you, well, at least by a majority vote, want to see. And then we can put it out for developers to look at. You can, you can look at the idea of selling it. It's already designed, or giving it away, because the return on investment's obviously what we're looking for. But it's a lot of negotiations to look at in the future for that. That's the path that I'm working down right now, and I'll keep each of you up to date as it goes. If you got any questions at any time, just let me know. That's all I've got, ma'am. Thank you very much.
I just had one follow-up in regards to your Streetscape's comment. I know the project that's in front of us is one specific block, you know, of Main Street. I brought up once before, I believe, that it seemed from an aesthetic standpoint that if we were going to be taking out, I mean, all the trees come out of that block, and we're planting new trees at that block, that at that moment, we really should look at the other trees that are planted outside of that block.
Sure.
You know, if we're already going to be purchasing a certain type of tree, that, you know, would be a missed opportunity potentially to have one block have, and then other blocks, you know, have aged-out trees. And we might miss our bang for our buck not planting all those trees at the same time, and to where they're all the same age and kind of grow up together, I guess, you know.
Makes perfect sense, and we can do that outside the contract. We can, whatever, freeze or spec out by VDOT. Obviously, we don't know who the contractor's going to be right now. Tough time of year to bid out anything, but...
And I don't know what the cost of that is, but I would at least be curious to, you know, you know, if it should be looked into.
Austin, you got anything to add to that? I mean...
As we were looking at the trees, and we presented to y'all what our recommendation and recommendation from an arborist, if you remember back, that was a while back now, based off of the comments that council made during that time period is what we will recommend for the construction process. And I know we actually have a meeting this Friday internally with staff to look at other funding opportunities to replicate what's being done at Streetscape or other VDOT projects across the town. And continuing with the trees along the same timeframe, we'll make sure that that is part of that conversation.
Thank you.
All righty. Remember what kind of tree it was?
Male ginkgo.
All right. Just a reminder, our next council meeting will be May 7th, 2024, closed session at 5:30. Open session will begin at 7:00 p.m. As there's nothing else on the agenda, I declare this meeting adjourned.